Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 8, 2022. Time being seven, 7:01, I call the meeting to order. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am advising all those in attendance this evening that this meeting is being recorded by the Town of Oxford. In addition to the Town of Oxford, Mr. Robert King is also recording the meeting this evening. Could everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I ask that everybody bow their head and we take a moment of silence for both Massachusetts State Trooper Tamara Bucci, who lost her life in the line of duty this past Thursday, and also for Ukraine and the struggle that they're going through right now. The first item on our agenda is the swearing-in ceremony of Officer Justina M. Lapierre.
Good evening, members of the Board, Madam Manager. I'm pleased to present to the Board tonight your newest officer to take the oath of office, Justina Lapierre, as she has successfully completed the conditional requirements to become a police officer. Ms. Lapierre will be officially sworn to her duties by our town clerk, Michelle Jenkins. Justina is a 2014 graduate of Oxford High School. Over the last few years, she has worked extremely hard to put herself in a position to be considered for this career. She has worked as a police dispatcher for the Town of Spencer and also as an auxiliary police officer in the towns of Southridge and Charlton. In contemplation of putting her name forward to the Board for appointment, not only did she score well on the entry-level exam and presented very well during all phases of the hiring process, but she also extended herself both personally and financially to self-sponsor at the Municipal Police Training Academies full-time and part-time police academies. This is a major credit to herself, her dedication, and her strong desire to enter the field of policing. We are glad to welcome her to the OPB team and the challenges that lie ahead of her in her field training program, which begins tomorrow morning. Ms. Lapierre, please step up to be sworn by our clerk.
Do you raise your hand if you'd like to me? I, Justina Lapierre.
Hi, Justina Lapierre.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
I will obey the lawful orders.
I will obey the lawful orders.
Of all my superior officers.
Of all my superior officers.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Now faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As an Oxford police officer.
As an Oxford police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of the United States.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of the United States.
On my honor, I will never betray my integrity.
On my honor, I will never betray my integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
And uphold values.
And uphold values.
Of my community.
Of my community.
And the agent fee as well.
And the agent fee as well.
So, on behalf.
So, on behalf.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Justina will now be pinned by her father, Dimitris Dematis, if he would come up, please. And I believe she has a few words that she would like to address the Board.
Yes, I just want to thank you all for this opportunity. I'm very eager and excited to start. My first day is tomorrow morning, and I can't wait to make a positive impact on community of the world, so thank you.
Thank you. So, we all wish her well in her new career. Hopefully, she has many years ahead of us with the Oxford Police Department, and we're very excited to have her onboard with us. And as the Board knows, we'll be doing this again in probably less than a month. We have two more offices that will be coming onboard, as you know, Michael Buxton and Patrick Chalker. We were fortunate enough to get them slated for an academy, which begins April 19th. So, when I was last before the Board, I had explained that the academy wasn't until July or June, so they'll be traveling up to the North Shore and New England Community College, but they'll be partnered up, riding together, so they'll be a team as they approach that process. So, but we'll come back before the Board again in this forum, and we'll do another swearing-in ceremony, although they won't get pinned until they complete their police academy training. Unless the Board has any other questions.
I think we'd like to get a picture up front.
Absolutely.
We'll come down with Justina and the officers.
Norman, I would have worn my better suit. That's all right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Rod and Gun Club for 300 St. Nav. The Board is in receipt of the packet with the, let's see, it's a complete amendment packet for the Singletary Rod and Gun Club for the appointment of new manager. Maureen Sullivan is here with us this evening. Good evening, and thank you for joining us. So, you're taking over as manager?
Yes.
Okay. Any particular reason for the change?
Um, it's just that I'm in a position every year, and Tam, once she was the prior bar manager, has, she's served, I think, probably like six or seven years now, and COVID and everything, she just decided she was done. Plus, her husband has taken the position that will move him up to Hampshire, so they're not sure of that move, but she's just, she's tired of doing it.
Okay. And are you in relation to the treasurer?
I am, because my father.
Okay, okay. Awesome. Board members, have any comments, questions, comments? No? I make a motion that the Board vote to approve the change of manager to Maureen Sullivan as requested by Singletary Rod and Gun Club, contingent upon the payment of the fees associated with the amendment, quarry authorization, vote of the entity board, proof of citizenship, satisfactory results under the Town of Oxford single fingerprinting bylaw and policy, and any and all other supporting documentation required by the Board or ABCC, and that the application be forwarded to the ABCC as required for their approval.
I make that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes also, that's for affirmative. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just want you guys to have a copy of the license.
Uh, yes.
Very much.
Thank you.
You folks have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Next item on the agenda is the introduction, excuse me, introduction of Director of Public Health Services, Rika Saret.
Rika Saret. That's okay, I respond to all of her presentation. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thanks for joining us.
I'm very happy to have joined the Oxford community and team. Just a little bit of background on myself, prior to Oxford, I was deputy health agent for the Town of Walpole, and prior to that, I was working with the City of Marlborough as one of their inspectors for almost five years. My background is, I graduated from Lincoln College, my major in biology and minors in public health and aid studies, actually, and then I graduated from the University of New England with my master's in public health. And excitingly enough, this past year, I sat for the REHS exam, registered my mental health specialist, and I was very excited that I passed. And also soil evaluator, assistant inspector, have all the food certificates, right, food protection manager, allergen, gone through various state trainings, and I'm glad that I can bring myself to Town of Oxford.
That is a lot. When did you start with Oxford?
I started at the beginning of December.
Beginning of December, okay. Board members, any questions or comments?
Yes, sounds like quite the background, so.
I've been very fortunate in my experiences, and I fell into public health, and I really enjoy it. I like that everybody's different, there's always something new to learn, as we've learned in the past two years. It can be stressful, but also exciting and good to help people, and I really enjoy that, and get to meet people from all sorts of backgrounds.
Mr. Chairman, I just, the one thing I can say about Rika, aside from the fact that she has a phenomenal professional background, it's the right blend. As you know, we had somewhat fragmented contractual services throughout the Board of Health, and one of our goals administratively has been to try to get more uniform, consistent, you know, professional skills across the entire department instead of it being fragmented among people from the outside trying to do the work. And so, where I really believe and have already witnessed, a much better flow of communication, inability to follow up with cases, and not to slight at all that we have someone who is not only able to do Title V, but everything from food inspections all the way down. So, that to us is unique in the sense that we have all of that under one umbrella at the moment, and she's doing a great job. So, I just wanted to make sure that the Board knew that, yes. It is, yes, awesome.
Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight and giving us a little background info on yourself, and welcome to Oxford.
Of course, thank you for having me. If there's ever any questions or something that you'd like the Board to look at or need to work on, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda is Oxford Lions Club request to use Oxford Bandstand on April 16, 2022. The event is going to be Meet the Easter Bunny and Food Drive. Francis King, on behalf of the Oxford Lions Club, has asked that the Board allow the use of the Oxford Bandstand on April 16 for Meet the Easter Bunny event along with the Food Drive. His application is attached. I just want to point out one fact that April 16's event will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and will not be in confliction with the next request that we have for April 16. So, that's later in the afternoon. With that being said, I move that the Board approve the request from the Oxford Lions Club to use the Bandstand on April 16, 2020, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM to hold a Food Drive and Meet the Easter Bunny event.
I make that motion making a note that the, it's April 16, 2022.
Oh, what did I say?
2020, that's okay.
Oh, gosh.
That's okay.
I will second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. The corrected motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that's for an affirmative. Next item on the agenda is Oxford Lions Club request to use Oxford Bandstand on September 17, 2022 for their Fall Festival. Mr. King, on behalf of the Oxford Lions Club, has asked that the Board allow the use of Bandstand in Jocelyn Park on September 17, 2022 for the Lions Club Fall Festival. The application is attached. I will move that the Board approve the request from the Oxford Lions Club to use the Bandstand in Jocelyn Park on September 17, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM to hold the Oxford Lions Fall Festival.
I make that motion?
I will second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that is for an affirmative. Next, we have a request to use Oxford Bandstand on April 16 from, April 16, 2022, from Paige Maurey for a wedding ceremony. Paige and Malik Gay have contacted the Town through Shelley Lambert, Community Center Director, asking to use the Bandstand for a wedding ceremony on April 16 from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. The application is attached, and again, this will not conflict with the event that is ending at 2:00 PM. With that being said, I move that the Board approve the application from Paige Maurey and Malik Gay and allow a wedding ceremony to be held at the Bandstand April 16, 2022, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, for an affirmative. Next item on the agenda is a vote to void the all-pouring license for Joe's Diner Incorporated, doing business as Oxford's formerly doing business at Two Millberry Ave. So, the liquor license that was taken out originally by Joe's Diner, it was taken out during a time that it was under special legislation and did not permit a transfer. Since then, the new owners have taken out a liquor license. There cannot be a permit, two permits for the same address, so they have turned this one in, and we are going to be voting to void this one. So, I make a motion that the Board void the all-pouring liquor license issued to Joe's Diner Incorporated, doing business as Oxford's at Two Millberry Boulevard, Millberry Ave.
I believe that is the word Boulevard, not Millberry Ave.
Okay, thank you. Millberry Boulevard.
I second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just for clarification, this, by voiding this license, does not affect the individual that is running that business with a license?
Correct, they're two separate licenses for two separate businesses, so. Motion's been made, seconded, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that's for an affirmative. Next item on the agenda is surplus request from Finance Director Catherine McKenna for eight iPhones. You have the list of the iPhones in your packet. I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that the Board vote to surplus the following: iPhone 7 serial number or model number Mike November Alpha Charlie 2 Lima Lima forward slash Alpha. iPhone 7 Mike November Alpha Charlie 2 Lima Lima forward slash Alpha. iPhone 8 Mike Quebec 722 Lima Lima forward slash Alpha. iPhone 8 Mike Quebec 722 Lima Lima forward slash Alpha. iPhone SE Mike Hotel Golf 43 Lima Lima forward slash Alpha. iPhone SE Mike X-Ray 9 Kilo 2 Lima Lima forward slash Alpha. iPhone 8 Mike Quebec 722 Lima Lima forward slash Alpha. iPhone 8 Mike Quebec 722 Lima Lima forward slash Alpha, as requested by the Finance Director, Catherine McKenna.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that is for an affirmative. Next item on the agenda is the donation acceptance. We received $1,000 from Bank Hometown to the Oxford Community Center in sponsorship for Movies on Main for summer 2022. I would make a motion that the Board accept the donation to the Oxford Community Center from Bank Hometown for $1,000 in sponsorship of Movies on Main, summer 2022, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes, that is for an affirmative, and of course, looking forward to, one, the summer, and two, Movies on Main. Next agenda item, Oxford Little League requests to hold annual opening day parade on April 24, 2022, from noon to 1:00 PM. Phil Davis, who's the president of the Oxford Little League, is asking that the Board approve opening day parade to be held on April 24, beginning at noon at the American Legion and ending at 1:00 PM at the Oxford Community Center. Mr. Davis has been in contact with the police chief for his approval. I make a motion that the Board approve the request of the Oxford Little League to hold their opening day parade on April 24, beginning at noon at the American Legion and ending at 1:00 PM at the Oxford Community Center, contingent upon approval of the Oxford Police Department.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that is for an affirmative. Next item, Articles for Annual Town Meeting Warrant submitted by the Planning Board. The articles include a proposed zoning bylaw amendment to Chapter 2, District Regulations, Section 2.3.7, the district boundary division. Article number two is proposed zoning bylaw amendment to Chapter 23, Marijuana Overlay District, to extend the defined area of said MOD district in conjunction with an amendment to the zoning map. Article number three is proposed zoning map amendment to change the zoning district of a portion of Route 20 from R3 residential to general business. And article number four is proposed zoning bylaw amendment, new chapter, large-scale battery energy storage systems. I would make a motion that the Board vote to allow the articles submitted by the Planning Board to be placed on the special town meeting warrant and refer the articles back to the Planning Board in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5.
I second, I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I have a couple of questions. I do see the Director of Planning and Economic Development. I was wondering if he would be able to come up and answer a few questions? If that's okay with you?
Good evening.
Tony Sousa, Director of Planning and Economic Development? Yes.
I just have a few questions. The second item, proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the Marijuana Overlay District. At the last town meeting, or was it the town meeting before that, it was a very close vote, but the townspeople did vote down extending the Marijuana Overlay District. If you could, could you just provide some clarification? What makes this one a little, what makes this one different from that one?
It's identical.
Oh.
At the last time when the Planning Board held its hearing on the matter, they gave a favorable recommendation. If the Planning Board were to give an unfavorable per 48, then there would be a two-year period where it could not be reintroduced.
Okay.
The, as far as the particulars of it, it's, again, it's identical.
So, it's the same area?
Same area, same, same map change, same, same language.
Excellent. And is there a particular reason why we're putting it up again, even though it was voted down so recently?
The, it's consistent with the master plan, the extension of the overlay district. We are cleaning up a boundary issue on the southern side of Route 20, and I hope I'll have the opportunity to provide a presentation to everyone at town meeting.
My, my question is in regards to, let's see, I believe it is, I'm just, the one with, we have 200 various parcels for the joint, for the, get with me here, I just read it a minute ago.
Those are the approximately 200 parcels that are.
Yes.
Split zoned.
Yep.
And the way that the current description reads in our zoning bylaw is the term lots of record, okay? So, a lot of record at a time when a new zoning boundary is extended or changed, whatnot, by special permit of the Planning Board. The Planning Board may elect to allow the smaller portion of the district to apply for the entire lot. But what's very, very important is a lot of record. So, 10 years, 20 years go by, a lot of record changes. That benefit is no longer afforded to, to, to someone to, to apply. So, in the new language, we would strike out lot of record and just call it lots, and still requires a special permit of the Board regardless of the, of the circumstance now or under the new language, but it clears up this issue with a lot of record. And certainly, the way I see it is, again, as years go by, lots change, family lots, for example, may get subdivided, whatnot. A lot of record technically has changed from the time when, let's say, the zoning was, was allowed, right? When the zoning was, the boundary was changed. So, this helps just simplify the requirements and still has an important safeguard, which is still the special permit, which gives the Planning Board the discretion to actually grant it or not. But by lot of record, we're forcing people to go back and do title search, applicants to go back and, and to meet a threshold that I think we can simplify and make it, make it easier to, to apply before the Board.
Okay, I got it. And then my last question, the, the new chapter for the large-scale battery energy storage system is, do we have, how do I want to ask this question? Do we have a business in front of us who is interested in doing something like this, or is this just to amend something that businesses can have on their property?
So, no one has filed for battery energy storage systems. However, we've received several inquiries over the last six, eight months or so, and while there might be a, an allowance for this under miscellaneous uses. I don't feel like miscellaneous uses are necessarily the best, meaning there's no criteria, there's no guideline, not only for the Board, but also for the prospective applicants. So, this by special permit, with site plan review, similar to solar, battery energy storage systems of a certain size, so of five megawatts is what we're looking at. So, this, these are significant. These are not just your personal system in your, in your backyard or, or an accessory system at, for example, IPG. These are, 10 megawatts is a very, very large system. So, by special permit and only allowed in the industrial districts, someone could apply. Someone could apply, and we would establish, as you see in the draft, certain criteria, for example, noise study is, is a requirement. It just wouldn't be captured under miscellaneous, because there's nothing there to guide
Mm-hmm.
both the board or prospective applicant. There is, generally speaking, um, th- there is a growing interest in battery energy storage systems throughout the country, for that matter. And although we have not received an applicant to date, I would anticipate that there would be growing interest too. And we've gotten some inquiries in general, and, which leads us to, well, miscellaneous isn't the best, isn't the best fit for um, for uh, for both the board or, or a prospective applicant.
Gotcha, I understand. Okay, thank you, um, thank you. You're always a wealth of information. I appreciate, uh, you know, all of these minute details that you need to pay attention to.
And so, i- and if, uh, thank you. And if I may too, um, Mr. Chairman, for clarity, the um, as I heard the motion, I thi- it was, I believe it was referenced to a special town meeting?
Yes.
And so, um, that's an error. I think. So, um, a- and, and with that too, um, the anticipated date of public hearing for everyone's benefit would be our first meeting in April, which is April eleventh, that Monday, at seven, here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tony.
So, with that being said, um, I made a motion, the motion was seconded. I'm going to amend the motion that the board vote to allow the articles submitted by the Planning Board to be placed on the town meeting warrant and refer the articles back to the Planning Board in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Call for a vote?
No.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's three in affirmative, one negative um, for the amendment. Do we have to? We need a vote on the actual, okay. So, I would, so we voted on the
We voted to amend.
The motion. Okay.
I know.
So now I'm making the motion that the board vote to allow the articles submitted by the Planning Board to be placed on the town meeting warrant and refer the articles back to the Planning Board in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
No.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that is three in affirmative, one negative. The next item on the agenda is Massachusetts School Building Authority, Clara Barton School and Alfred M. Chafee School, Statement of Interest Vote. Um, the board is in receipt of the packets.
Mr. Chairman, I just, sure, um, I've been in touch with both the school administration and in particular, Justin Ledoux, um, as business manager. As you know, uh, the school had submitted a statement of interest in the previous year um, based on looking at the totality of um, all our school buildings. And we did not get um, uh, not approval, but acceptance to proceed at that point in time. But they did encourage us to look at, um, what they call the accelerated repair project. So instead of an entire school building, looking at major pieces, uh, whether it's roofs, boilers, windows, things like that. And so that's what this statement of interest now has been modified um, for both the Chafee and Clara Barton School in particular. So that is different than what was being looked at formally with the entire middle, middle school.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to be looking for um, money from the state to help us fund this, or?
Yes, that's what you vote this evening. Um, yes, I, I, I realize you weren't on the board when we had done the previous um, statement of interest. But yes, it, you have to actually get it certified by both the school board and because buildings in their entirety also fall within the um, Board of Selectmen, we also get the approval in terms of a vote to proceed with this proposal, which is looking at these two schools in particular to get funding assistance to make some major repairs, which I know is a, a key interest of yours, Selectmen or Blank.
It is. Now, are we looking to get fully funded, or is this something that we get half the money and we, you know, the town puts up half, or?
Yeah, you, you, there, there is, the accelerated repair, I am familiar with it. That usually there is a component in which the town has a certain part of the responsibility, but make no mistake about it, the, the state does bear a, a large portion of that. So without it, we would bear the entire cost of it. So if there is a need, which we understand there is, uh, then if we are so fortunate to receive funding assistance from the MSBA, um, there is, there is a formula for doing that, uh, for a number of, uh, of these particular types of repair projects.
So it's maintenance. I had met with some people before the meeting, and we talked a great deal about maintenance and the cost. So this would be something that, uh, if we can get with the, we'll go a long way in saving this money. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion points? Okay. I make a motion that we, we have convened in an open meeting today, Tuesday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-two, prior to the Statement of Interest submission closing date, as the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Oxford, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinance, has voted to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a Statement of Interest Form dated February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two for the Alfred M. Chafee School located at Nine Clover Street, Oxford, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts Skill, School Building Authority in the future. Under Priority Number Five, Replacement, Renovation, or Modernization of the School Facility Systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs to the school facility. The Town of Oxford hereby submits to your roof repairs as many areas of the roof leak, primarily in the sections that are ballasted EPDM. Uh, the roof needs to be replaced in those areas original to the building as the last time it was replaced was nineteen ninety and are well beyond life expectancies. And hereby further specifically, specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority is no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Oxford to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's for an affirmative. I'll then make a motion that we have convened in an open meeting today, Tuesday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-two, prior to the Statement of Interest submission closing date, as the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Oxford, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a Statement of Interest Form dated February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two for the Clara Barton School located at Twenty-five Depot Road, Oxford, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Under Priority Number Five, Replacement, Renovation, or Modernization of School Facility Systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility. The Town of Oxford hereby submits the roof, roof repairs as many areas of the roof leak, primarily in the sections that are ballasted EPDM. The roof needs to be replaced in those areas original to the building as the last time it was replaced was nineteen ninety and are well beyond life expectancy. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority is no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Oxford to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's for an affirmative. The next item on the agenda is a zoning Board of Appeals appointment of Robert Keough Senior. Mr. Robert Keough Senior of Forty-eight Depot Road has submitted an application for the open position of Associate Member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, the application is attached. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Keough had come to my office uh, and had expressed quite a bit of interest. Uh, he does have a construction background also as a part, project manager and has been a foreman, um, in terms of being a carpenter and a business owner. And um, he has expressed, you know, a, a real keen interest on Betterment of the Town and also feels that his background in construction and project management will be helpful and was eager to start slowly as an associate member on the board um, to learn um, the ropes, so to speak. Uh, and I think he'll be an excellent addition to the zoning board.
Any comments from the board?
Known in my whole life.
Of all the unregistered vehicles he has in his yacht.
Mr. Everett? Please maintain order.
He is a business man, has a good reputation.
Stop.
I recommend that.
Please maintain order during the meeting. Don't make me ask you again. I would make a motion that the board approve uh, ZBA Associate Member Robert, to Robert Keough Senior for a one-year appointment expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote?
No.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's three in affirmative, one absent, or, one negative. Uh, next item on the agenda is review of Board of Selectmen Policies. Uh, again, this evening, we're gonna be, take a quick look at uh, three policies that the board has that are outdated and no longer needed. Um, the first one is Policy Nineteen Zero Six. It reads that whenever the Planning Board approves a preliminary plan, it shall be sent to the Streetlight Committee, who will then forward to the Board of Selectmen their recommendations concerning streetlights. The Planning Board shall indicate on the plan whether the electrical utilities will be installed underground or overhead. The Streetlight Committee shall indicate to the Board of Selectmen where any streetlights are to be located on the plan, and the Board of Selectmen shall give final approval. The developer shall be responsible for payment for the cost of purchase and installation of the streetlights. Uh, this um, policy was from January eleventh, nineteen ninety. Since this policy was put into place, we no longer have a streetlight committee in the sole handle with the Planning Board. So I would make a motion to repeal Policy Nineteen Zero Six.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote?
Uh, yes?
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's for an affirmative. The next policy is Policy One Nine Zero Seven. Policy reads, um, that the policy of the board be to meet on a weekly basis, with the exception of the summer months, beginning in September. Um, this policy was dated June twenty-third, nineteen ninety-two. Since then, um, it's, it's outdated. We, we set the agenda at the beginning of the year, make adjustments as needed, and we, uh, you know, if we have business before the board and have to call special meetings, we do so. So I would make a motion to repeal this.
I'll sec- uh, second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's for an affirmative. The last one this evening is Policy Nineteen Zero Eight. It reads, the Town of Oxford, in order to comply with the congressional legislation dated November fifth, nineteen ninety, Social Security withholdings for all part-time municipal employees, herewith adopts the Deferred Compensation Plan of the Public Employee Benefit Services Corporation, PEBSCO. Every part-time employee not participating in a town retirement program that is Massachusetts, I missed the line. I did not. That is Massachusetts Teachers Retirement and Worcester County Retirement will be subject to a six percent payroll withholding or a deduction of any such rate as subsequently adopted or amended for application to this purpose by the Internal Revenue Service. This withholding will be, um, become effective with earnings for the week ended August thirtieth, nineteen ninety-one. All individuals taking employ, uh, employment with the town from that date will be subject to a retirement deduction or the PEBSCO deduction as the case requires. This is dated August thirteenth, nineteen ninety-one. Since then, um, we now have OBR. This falls under H.R. and labor laws. So I make a motion to repeal this.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's for an affirmative. Next item on the agenda is vacancy on the Board of Selectmen. Consideration and vote on calling for a special election to fill vacancy on the Board of Selectmen with notice of said election to be filled with the town clerk. Chapter Three, Section Three Dash One Dash Two of the Town Charter, vacancies in the office of the selectmen shall be filled by special elections in accordance with provisions of general law. The town clerk is asking that board call for a special election to fill the vacancy on the board with a remaining one-year term. Uh, this open seat would be placed on the annual town election ballot. And then we have communications attached to our packet.
Who is the resigning selectman?
So, I would make a, I asked you to keep order, Chris Everett.
The chauvinistic pig? I'll leave, not a problem. He's a chauvinistic pig.
Please.
Hey, shut your mouth. He's a chauvinistic woman.
What the heck?
I make a motion that the board call for a special election to fill a vacancy on the Board of Selectmen and to be placed on the annual town election warrant with notice of said election to be filled with the town clerk.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's for an affirmative. That brings us to our Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the board and to the public. Um, this evening, I start the manager's report off with the first item, which relates to the upcoming budget presentation. In accordance with the Town Charter, I'll be presenting the fiscal year twenty-three budget at a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, um, which is done on an annual basis. We're scheduling this for Wednesday, March sixteenth, at six P.M. Typically, we try to put it all in one of your meetings, and it's quite difficult at times. So, um, it'll be easier also for the Finance Committee. That's a normal day that they meet. So we're trying to do a little bit of accommodation this year. So, um, the finance team has been working very hard. Um, and we've together been revising our budget and working on our figures. And the Finance Committee has already started hearing from individual department heads. Uh, and all of this will bring us one step closer to the annual town meeting. The next item is the fiscal year twenty-two supplemental budget. We had some good news that had come through that the governor, uh, for this current fiscal year had, um, actually put together a supplemental spending bill and is anticipating, uh, two point four billion dollars additional in funding. And this is being marked in particular for, uh, something that we all are near and dear to our hearts, and that's Chapter Ninety money, um, an additional hundred million he's proposing, as well as, uh, local road repair for winter roads, um, that have been damaged. That's another hundred million. And also a hundred and fifty million for climate, uh, change and resiliency initiatives, um, including M.V.P. program. As you know, our, um, Director of Planning and Economic Development is working very you know, our, um, Director of Planning and Economic Development is working, uh, very closely with our, um, DPW director in updating our hazard mitigation plan through a grant, um, that is not costing us anything, uh, for the consulting services, and also an MVP, uh, grant, uh, to, uh, actually put together the first plan, uh, for the town of Oxford. This will open us up for additional, what they call, construction or project phase money. And if they're putting in additional $150 million, we're gonna be in an excellent position, uh, once we finish this plan, because we could not apply for any funding, um, for that grant program until we actually complete this. So I wanna say thank you, um, to Tony Sousa and, um, Jared Duval for helping work together, um, to move that forward. Uh, it's been a long goal for myself and, uh, you know, our prior DPW director. So I'm really excited that they've been able to advance that. And I do have a, a request, uh, further down on my manager's report number seven about the MVP survey. I'm gonna keep asking the public, uh, to go to our actual, uh, website for the DPW and actually take a moment to complete the survey online. Um, there are links available on our website, uh, the town Facebook page and the DPW Facebook page. Um, it is very important for us. If you recall, when we did our master plan, we had an unprecedented amount of input from local folks. Uh, more than 2,000 residents took the time, uh, to contribute to that. That's why our Director of Planning and Economic Development, the planning board, myself as manager, use that as a very constructive tool for helping guide what really the citizens of town are hoping we move towards. I believe that the MVP, um, planning, uh, phases will also generate that if we get enough, um, support from, from, uh, the local townspeople. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to, uh, inform the board is that, um, sorry, that we have, um, retained the services of Strategic Municipal Services, LLC of Worcester, to assist us with our Opera reporting. Um, I think I have already said to the board when I did a presentation back in November, that the reporting requirements are pretty onerous. Uh, with the federal government, we had retained, um, SML, um, S services, um, prior for the CARES Act reporting, and it was extremely helpful. Uh, and we wanna do the same with this, because, um, these reports have to be, uh, very accurate, complete, and timely. And if they're not, the Opera funding itself, no matter what projects we assign it to or use the money for, if we don't comply with the actual reporting and the administration components, um, that, we will not get reimbursed, um, or the federal government will actually take the money away, so, from us. Uh, so we don't have, uh, the state intervening for this particular federal grant. And, um, the administration reporting requirements can be used. Um, actually, um, the grant money, the Opera money from the feds can be used for this, very specific purposes, uh, to help with administration and, uh, compliance reporting. So that's what we'll intend to do. So they're one of the best, um, in the business. Uh, the next item, um, I had jumped ahead a little bit, um, is our excise, um, tax bills. Just to let everyone know, um, they had been mailed out on February 11th and fast approaching, um, March 14th. Uh, it's a very busy time for most people trying to catch up. They can pay online, in person. Uh, they can drop it in the mail or drop, and, uh, two drop boxes, one in the front and in the back. Uh, if you no longer own a vehicle, it's important for you to, um, understand that, uh, you can file for an abatement, particularly if you've been billed. And this can be done online and in person at our assessor's office. So we just wanna try to communicate that. We often have people who don't have, um, enough, uh, advance notice, so we're trying to give that as much as possible. And it's out on our sign outside, too. Um, dispatch contract. Um, I wanted to let you know that we, um, have begun negotiations with the Teamsters Local 170. Uh, this is for our dispatchers union. Um, I, I can't believe the three years have gone by since the last time that I, uh, negotiated the contract. Uh, but we do expect that we're gonna meet several times. Uh, we're hoping we can solidify, um, the language, uh, prior to, uh, the annual town meeting. Uh, but at any rate, we're hoping all of that, um, language and, um, successor, uh, contract will be voted and approved, um, by both the board here and, uh, the members of the dispatch, uh, staff by June 30th, uh, 2022. That's our goal. Next item is, um, Oxford Logistics Center Depot Road update. Um, I thought it was important, um, just to make a, a quick, um, statement about the fact that the Oxford Logistics Center, which had taken a reprieve, um, going back, uh, more than a month ago, uh, before the planning board. They wanted, um, to take a look at their plans and make revisions, and they have, um, now contacted the planning board, uh, with a revised facility, uh, proposal at Depot Road. Um, the applicant has already met numerous times, uh, with the Conservation Commission, and the proponents will be going before the planning board on March 28th, Tony? Okay, March 28th. Uh, there have been some circulating rumors concerning the project, um, including that it's an Amazon facility and that there will be an imminent domain, uh, land-taking as part of the project. Uh, the town has not received any, uh, credible information, uh, regarding this, uh, proposal, that it's for Amazon or that there's going to be land-takings. Uh, so I wanna say that out loud, because some people, I think, have taken liberties to say that it is. And it, and we have not received any information, um, to that effect. And I want the, the public to know that. And if we do, we'll make sure that the board and everybody knows about it. Uh, but there was also, um, no land-takings are being proposed, or nor being, uh, required by the proposal for the applicant. Uh, all the materials have been slid, submitted to the, uh, planning board, and, um, they're on the planning board, uh, page on the town website, and I encourage everybody to take a look at that by visiting our, uh, website, and also attending, uh, the planning board for, um, their continued, um, review of the actual proposal as it comes forward. Uh, I had already done the MVP. Um, just, uh, number eight on the, uh, manager's report was just to inform the board that we are in the process of interviewing for a firefighter paramedic position, which became available after one of our longest-serving firefighters had resigned to pursue an alternate professional, uh, career track, in which, um, you know, we wish them the best, and, uh, they, they were really excited to finally, uh, finish, um, their requirements to pursue that. Uh, we anticipate that we're going to, uh, fill this position, uh, hopefully in short order with a career firefighter, paramedic, uh, transfer from a full-time, uh, fire department. What we're hoping is that we won't have a long, uh, learning curve with somebody new. Uh, and what we'd like to do is, um, hopefully, uh, hold that, uh, knowledge that, uh, and that experience that's gonna be very important for somebody to walk in and fill those shoes. Uh, number nine was, uh, to, um, alert the board that the, um, the department, uh, for the fire department has successfully been able to, uh, obtain two grants. One is the student awareness, um, of fire education, and the other one is the senior safe, uh, grant. Uh, one was, um, in the total of $4,575. And the senior safe grant, $2,855. Obviously, these, um, may not seem like a lot of money, but to the department, it's very important. Um, they, they have the ability to both educate and provide outreach to our, um, students, uh, and also to our seniors. And the safe program for the general public might not be aware that it was created 27 years ago. So it was considered an invaluable tool to help municipalities, um, provide uniform or consistent education to help reduce, um, both accidents and fire deaths. Um, that has helped, believe it or not, since the, um, actual program founding for annual child deaths, um, has reduced them by 78%. And, um, the program was expanded to seniors about seven years ago. So, again, um, this is to try to, um, wrap our hands around, uh, fire prevention and safety. I know the chairman, uh, understands that very well, but, uh, you know, I think it's always important to remind our, um, citizens of how important these small grants are. And they do add up to making, uh, profound, uh, impact on our community. CPAR training for our employees. I just wanted to, uh, alert the board that we are providing this year in particular, um, a great management focus on trying to provide greater training opportunities for our employees, not just in the fields in which they practice on a day-to-day basis, but also for things that might be very helpful across, um, the organization. So we are going to be hosting a CPR training for town employees, uh, that's coming up on March, um, both on March 25th and April 1st. Obviously, we're gonna be working with our fire department to do that. Um, this will help boost our ability to, um, respond effectively should an emergency, uh, incident occur, uh, within one of our municipal buildings or at an event, um, that the, um, you know, town or the school, uh, may be hosting. Uh, so we are hoping that that will be well, um, well-attended, and as COVID dissipates, um, you know, this is another example of us trying to reset and get back to what we were doing prior to that, but also expanding some of the opportunities beyond the normal departmental levels, um, that each of our staff, um, have to, um, provide each day. The next item is just to, uh, let the board know that, uh, since we had last met, the second edition of the Onward Oxford newsletter is now available. And, um, if you not picked it up, uh, you can see it, um, throughout not only the municipal building here, but all of our, um, different buildings. Uh, we've had a number of businesses also call asking for copies, and, um, it continues to be very, um, you know, positively received. I'm not making that up. We have had calls from other communities, uh, asking, um, how we actually put it together and hoping to borrow the idea, uh, for their community. But I, I think what people are now seeing is that the real intent of this is to show and share information about the different roles and responsibilities, and also programs and services that the town offers. And that's really the fundamental purpose. That's why, you know, when you go and you see it, um, and you get your hands on it, you'll see, you know, things like, you know, frequently asked questions about tax title, how to actually file an abatement, what are the upcoming, um, things that are happening at the senior center, what are the important dates that citizens should be noticing, and what's happening in our police department. All these are fundamental to expanding outreach and communication. And, um, you know, we do that on a lot of different fronts. Uh, but, you know, this is really being germane from each of the departments. And, um, and I appreciate being able to share, uh, share all of that, uh, news with the broader community. Uh, the next is just to update the board, since the board, um, actually had, uh, approved the new, uh, Massachusetts Strategic Health Group as our overall provider with the health insurance plan of Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare for our employees. Uh, I just wanted to alert you that we have, uh, a number, I think four or five, actual in-person open enrollment opportunities that are coming up for employees and retirees. Uh, the mailings have gone out to alert our, uh, both current employees and retirees. Uh, this is a behemoth, uh, undertaking for our, uh, human resources, and we will not just be hosting health insurance open enrollment. We're doing that through the month of March, but then after that, we'll be doing all the total open enrollments for all the other benefits. So it's, um, it's just something I wanted to put back on your radar, since you recently approved it, so that you know we're moving forward with being able, um, to hopefully make a seamless, uh, transition, uh, for employees. Uh, the next, um, item is just to, uh, alert the board that we had a ribbon cutting, uh, last, uh, week on Friday, uh, for Oxford's newest restaurant, El Patron Corona. We had a number of, uh, key staff, um, attend. I know that, um, Kaylee from, uh, Cable, um, Department has, uh, put together a little, um, uh, video. Uh, one of the things that we are going to continue to do, especially with our Director for Planning and Economic Development, is make sure our businesses know that we welcome them. It's, it's great that we meet here, but I think what's very important is we do even more outreach. And, um, I think that that's one of the things that we're trying to provide. And I don't know if Sammy, you can, uh, show the little video, but I think it would be helpful. We hope to do more of these for other businesses. Um, and we already have another business that we're targeting, uh, to go visit, um, who's just, uh, recently changed ownership and hands.
Good afternoon to all the residents of the town of Oxford and all our businesses. We are here today at the opening and the ribbon cutting for El Patron, which is a brand-new restaurant here in the town of Oxford. I'm here with, um, Oscar and Jose, who are the owners, uh, and Lil Diego, who is also one of the principal owners here. Uh, we are here at the really exciting, uh, moment to witness the opening of, uh, El Patron. Uh, we are here with our Chairman of the Board, Mike Daniels, and our longtime Chairman and Birthday Man, uh, here to celebrate, uh, the opening of El Patron and to acknowledge the fact that they are a great new contributing business. We hand over this certificate to them on, uh, the occasion of their opening. Um, it's, uh, says the following, um, Oscar and Jose, "Town of Oxford, be hereby known to all that the town of Oxford, through the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen, offer its sincerest congratulations to El Patron Corona in recognition of the joyous occasion of your grand opening and ribbon cutting. The investment you have made in this community has not gone unnoticed, and we look forward to having your grand and quality of service in, for many years to come." Is officially signed by the Town Manager. And of course, we are giving the greetings, uh, on behalf of the board and the community as well. So we wanna say congratulations, Oscar, and you too, Jose. Did you wanna say anything?
Oh, yeah.
You're okay? You're awesome. Shy. I am told, I am told that your grandmother holds the secrets to the kitchen.
Yeah, the kitchen.
And, and this is not the first restaurant you've had, right? Number four, number four.
Where are those located again?
Uh, Marquette, Lynn, and, uh, Mar, and Oxford.
Marquette, Lynn, and Oxford. Yep, that's great. Mr. Chairman, did you wanna say anything?
Welcome to the community and thank you very much.
How about you, Dennis?
I just wanna say, I'm sure you're gonna do a great job. Uh, they're all in the same heritage of great food, and we welcome you to the town of Oxford. Thank you for choosing us.
We wish you much success. We hope everyone comes for at least one margarita, right? And a couple of salsa chips.
Yes, sir.
Well, we wanted to give you this today. We wish you the best of luck, you know? And, uh, thank you so much for picking Oxford. It's your next big success story. Thank you.
Well, as you can see, they were very excited, and, um, the family, um, in its entirety and a lot of the waitstaff came out for the actual ribbon cutting. So we hope that they'll have many, many years here, um, with Oxford. And I wanna thank Kaylee for putting that together, um, in hopes that we can help, um, the residents realize it's already not just open, but we're open for business for the long term. And, um, we continue to think about ways, uh, to try to, uh, grow our economic development commitment here in town. And I think that, uh, between, uh, Tony and Kaylee, uh, we have some great ideas on the table. And that includes helping promote this, uh, type of business in the community. Um, the next item is just to allow the town to realize that we did have the MassWorks grant announcement, uh, recently on February 24th at a brand-new business called TC Controls. Uh, what a incredible new business, uh, that has chosen the town of Oxford, uh, to, um, actually not only cite, but to expand its workforce. Uh, it is a business that wanted to be part of this announcement. Uh, we were joined by the Assistant Secretary, uh, for Communities and Programs under the Executive Office for Economic Development, um, to make this, uh, big announcement.
All right. That being.
Two points.
The next item on the agenda tonight is the operating budget.
There's John Yule. He wasn't there, but it was another meeting. Um, so here we have, um, all of the, the Assistant Secretary, the owners of the business. You can see, um, Selectman LeBlanc and also Chairman Daniels, uh, Chief SAD, uh, Director Duval, and also Director Sousa, along with, um, Juan Vega from the state. Uh, I wanted to provide this because it showed a nice, um, I think, camaraderie among an existing business and what we hope to be new businesses. Uh, $2.8 million to put infrastructure, infrastructure, uh, for sewer extension and, um, also some pump upgrades, uh, to the entire, uh, 20 and Route 56 corridor. Uh, it was a, a great occasion, and I wanted to say that, um, the Eastland Partners was the component that put us, um, in good, uh, position to obtain the $2.8 million. Representative Frost had joined us, along with, um, Eastland Partners. Frost had joined us along with Eastland Partners to talk about their commercial footprint. And I think that that will bring some much-needed new revenue and economic growth to North Oxford. I know that both the Chairman and the Selectman LeBlanc came. I don't know if you wanted to say anything or reserve your comments for the Selectment announcements, but you want to wait? Yo. You'll say yours now? Go ahead. Yeah, all right.
I just want to take a minute to explain the importance of this development in North Oxford. You look at the money the state's putting into the road, it's about $50 million. Could be more. This was as of a few years ago. Mr. Proudty purchased the land on Route 56. This is where TC is located. When that is built out, we're looking at a value of about $20 million just on Route 56. And then with Eastland Partners, their total project as of two years ago was over $100 million. So we're looking at $175 million worth of infrastructure and new growth in North Oxford. Part of Eastland's project, 320 condos, two-bedroom units. They'll be coming before the planning board. Phase one has already started. We approved what's called a pad-ready site. They have a tremendous amount of earth to remove. They are looking at about 30,000 square feet of commercial growth. So if you take the 30,000 from them and the 20,000 from Mr. Proudty, we're looking at a significant amount of income, commercial income, over the next 10 years. This isn't going to happen overnight. At the next town meeting, we're going to be asked to rezone a piece of land between Route 56 and Savory Crossing. For some reason, it got zoned back in 1970 or 80 as residential in R3. And we're looking to, we were approached by a couple of property owners there. They'd like to see that rezoned for commercial, which is about another 16 acres. So we need to acknowledge the fact that our staff, under Jen's guidance, Tony and Jared, a lot of work involved in this. And we also need to thank Eastland Partners for getting involved in this. They've already put in, I believe it's $500,000, towards infrastructure. They're going to be looking at some of the septic sewage. They're also, one of the things that the planning board asked for is that we have a traffic light at one of the entrances. That's not going to happen for 10 or 15 years. But they are going to foot the bill and put the infrastructure in there now, so that can be done. So they've invested this money already and haven't made a nickel yet. So I think we picked the right partner to work with. I was on the planning board. We had two other partners come in and develop that. They both went belly up because they didn't have the money. So I think the future is bright in terms of our growth in commercial business. I think that with the logistics center, there's another company looking to come into town, a manufacturing company of over 100,000 square feet. We're in the early stages of that. So we are starting to get more and more businesses coming into the community. I think part of the reason is because we've hired the right staff, particularly Mr. Sousa. We've also gotten a number of grants that help us with the infrastructure. This is one of them. So we need to keep this going. And I think that growing up in North Oxford, I know what things used to be like. And there's going to be, I think, significant changes, but it's going to be positive for us as a community. And as I say, the growth has already started, but we're looking at about 10 to 12 years to get this thing completed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments. And that brings us to the next item on the manager's report, and that has to do with the senior tax write-off. Just to inform the board that we had such a robust application pool, we actually had to conduct a lottery. You know, we did it publicly through the town clerk's office to be able to award the actual positions that were, that we planned for. We planned for about 13 positions to fund this year, and we had more than double the number of people interested in being matched to a department in hopes that they could actually participate. So we're excited to have all of this attention. Just so the board knows, we've already not only selected the participants, but they've all been notified and matched with departments so they can begin their work, you know, through the different roles and position requirements. And we think we've got people really excited because we've matched them with some of their interests and the needs of the departments. And hopefully, we'll add some more positions next year, but it certainly is a huge help to seniors in being able to live in this community and to provide some tax relief. And I thank the board for their continued support in understanding that this is a major area to be helpful. The next item is just to remind the board and the public that we did have an open meeting law workshop that was very well-attended by boards, committees, and commission members and staff. It was held on February 15th. And the knowledge of Lauren Goldberg, Attorney Lauren Goldberg, who I've known for many years from KP Law, was, I'm sure, exceptional. And if anybody was not able to attend, they can contact our office, and we'll provide a link and video in the future. And we may even have new board members for all different boards and commissions have the opportunity to view that video, so they'll have a better understanding of how meetings are conducted and how the open meeting law applies to every public meeting and board that is doing work on behalf of the townspeople. And the last item on the manager's report is an Oxford COVID update. And I must say that I'm thrilled that I can be able to say that this will be my last update until, and hopefully, if never, the trends shift. I wanted to let you know that our public health nurses had shared with us that our total up until March 2nd for all cases in town surpassed 3,100 cases in town. And since that time, our last report from her was to show that our case count had drifted completely down to 12. And as you can see, that that was just an incredible shift and that the number of cases, when you look at them overall for this year, were obviously very high in comparison even to last year. So I just want to take a moment, even though we're all tired from this. Nobody's more tired than, I think, municipalities in trying to contend with COVID. But I do want to take a moment to say that we have had some incredible staff who have worked tirelessly. Amy Grenette and Kathy Schumer stepped into a role that was not, you know, well-defined at the onset of this pandemic. And they provided incredible support to people who were sick, people who lost loved ones, and also people who needed direction once they learned themselves or a family member had been sick. I want to call them out because we give an awful lot of attention to the pandemic to a lot of people, but they're still doing their work, you know, and making sure that when there is a communicable disease report that comes forward and it includes this as a diagnosis. So I know that they're very happy. I just wanted to make sure that the public also knew that on February 28th, we removed the mask mandate. I know many members of the general public are happy who are here today. But I think they would all join with me in celebrating, hopefully, the end of this. And I know we're very excited, and I appreciate the staff who have worked so hard to keep this community safe and provide the citizens with support. And that would conclude my manager's report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda this evening is Selectment Community Announcements.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of things I just wanted to mention. One, I'd like to publicly thank Joanne Fredericks. I had a retiree reach out to me a couple of weeks ago about some questions with her insurance, dental insurance, and why it's not offered. And I honestly didn't have any type of answer for her, so I had her call Joanne. I suggested that she give her a phone call, and she talked to her, and she chatted with her, and the retiree called me back and was very thankful for the direction. And Joanne was able to answer her questions. So wanted to just say publicly thank you to Joanne for serving our retirees. Also wanted to let the community know that I'm still, well, I'm not still, but I don't know if it's because I live near Carbuncle or whatnot, but we do still have some snowmobile issues and whatnot. I've been working with some residents in different areas of the town that live on waterfront. Wanted to thank the Assistant Town Manager for providing me some guidance in regards to that. Thank you so much. And, you know, one of the things that I learned is the board is responsible for issuing citations on that with the police. So, you know, maybe we need to add that to our agenda, you know? So snowmobile tickets or something like that. But anyway, but that is still ongoing. I have a couple of residents that I'm trying to work through that issue with. And then lastly, appropriately, you know, we did a few items ago. I just wanted to publicly thank Selectman Megan Toriano for, she is no longer on the board. She did resign. However, it was a pleasure to work with her. She was very, I always learn to something from her. She looks at things from a different way. She's very, very detail-oriented. And I really appreciated that about her. And she caught things that we didn't catch. And I'll miss her being on the board. And so I just wanted to publicly say thank you. This is not an easy job, despite how easy we might make it look. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes, a lot of sacrifices that are made. And I just wanted to thank her for her service. It's been a pleasure to serve with her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My only thing is I do like to take a moment to wish Megan good luck in whatever her future endeavors are. And I, although it's been brief, I did enjoy working with her on the Board of Selectmen. And again, I wish her the best of luck.
That will be the comment for tonight, because even though people may not realize it, I do have a fond affection for Megan. We used to be very, very close. I do think she served very well on the board, and I thank her for her service. And I wish her and her family all the luck in the future. That's all I have.
Thank you. As you can see from the Town Manager's report, it has been a busy couple of weeks here with the town, especially with the ribbon cutting. I've been to El Patron twice now. It's been an amazing meal each time. I highly recommend people get out and try it when they have the opportunity. And then one last thing is today is International Women's Day, so I wanted to take an opportunity to thank all the amazing leadership that we have in town from the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, who's in the audience, Selectman LeBlanc, Dee, our Administrative Assistant. I know she goes through a lot to make sure we can have a functioning meeting on Tuesday. So just thank you to all the women that, you know, hold leadership positions in town. With that being said.
You're fired, Robert.
What'd you say?
Knocked his camera. I said he's fired.
Oh, okay.
With that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And we'll vote yes. That's a foreign affirmative. Meeting adjourned.